A Veterans Honorary High School Diploma to Mr. Carroll Samuel Fraley III. Veterans Honorary High School Diplomas recognize the life experiences of an honorably discharged veteran who were unable to complete their high school education because of services in the Armed Forces during World War II, the Korean War, or the Vietnam War. Mr. Fraley served in the United States Marine Corps during the Vietnam War. His service began on February 29th, 1968, and he received his honorable discharge on September 30th, 1969. During his service, he earned the following medals, badges, and/or ribbons: Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal, RVN Cross of Gallantry, Vietnam Service Medal Combat Action Ribbon, Rifle Sharpshooter Badge. On behalf of the Akron Board of Education, I'm presenting Mr. Fraley with a Veterans Honorary High School Diploma from the Akron Public Schools with thanks for your service and dedication work.
When you're young, sometimes some of the decisions you make in life are really not really the best. And I was a senior at Central High School in 1968, '67, and I decided to join the Marine Corps. I was that interested in trying to prefer to go farther with my education. I wasn't concerned about it, being a teenager, and so I went into the service in my senior year. I went over to Vietnam, like she said, and I went through the basics. I went through ITR, I went to NOM, I was over there 13 months, and I come home. And I was, because I was lucky enough to come back home, we want to remember all the men and women that lost their lives there. I had five months left to go with the commitment that I gave to the Marine Corps, and my MOS was six months or less, so I was able to get an early out after I got back to the States. But as time went on, after I came back and started to go to work, and I worked at General Tire, which I didn't need a high school diploma or college or whatever, everything seemed to be great. My wife and I, we had three children. Next thing, the General Tire shut down. There were thousands of us on the streets at that time, and '80 to '82, and it was very difficult not having just the high school diploma to get a job. And so it made it difficult throughout, but my wife and I was able to continue to support our family and each other. And my daughter here just recently, because her husband's a retired Navy veteran, and she knows a lot about what goes on with the military, and she said that I could possibly get my GED through the VA. And so with her support and help with this, I was able to go up to the VA and talk to them. A little late as far as possibly for a job, but I'm not that worried about working. I don't want to work that hard anyway. You know? And so it's always been a drawback for me mentally and also out there financially. So I want to thank you all very much for presenting it to me. It means tremendous to me. It's not a college degree. I'm not going to be able to go down and talk to a mom or nothing, but it does mean a lot.
If you could introduce your family.
Yes. I'd like to introduce my beautiful wife Cheryl. Please come here. Our oldest son, we lost. And our daughter Diane. Come on, you'll get in the picture, huh? Get in. And that's her husband right there, Brian. Walk on up there, Brian. That's her son, and Taylor's her daughter. And over here is my son. He's a deputy sheriff here for Summa County, and his wife Heather, and their two children, Zach and Ash. Come on up here for pictures. Come on. Oh, are they? Okay. You all done with the pictures in this?
I don't...
I'm wearing road glasses.
Act like you like each other.
Let me know each other. Say cheese. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Should we just go now? I'm not being smart. I read the paper today.
Well, we're not the troublesome portion of this.
Oh! Okay, I'm sorry.
So yes, if you would like to go, I hope you're going to treat this nice gentleman or at least your lovely wife to some dinner, and thank you for taking the time to apply, and thank you.
Thank you. Very, very much.
This is the time of year when we really like to do good stuff. Okay, so on that note, community and school reflection. There have been a few graduations and things going on you might want to share, so I'd love to...
I attended North High School's graduation, and also I spoke at Dartmouth's graduation. I just want to point out about the honor guard. They just do an excellent job, man. It's a real, and they take the crap very, very seriously. We tell them they work diligently to make sure they execute just perfectly, and they do that every time. So I'm grateful to their instructor and their commitment to excellence. I also had an opportunity to attend yesterday's kindergarten recruitment along with Carla Sibley at Civics Theater, a number of area churches, my own church, Early to Church of God, the House of the Lord, county council members, in particular Tamara Lee, who heads up the education motivation success for the city. The turnout was wonderful, as you said, a good opportunity to centralize recruitment of our young folks into early education opportunities. And Heddington was really cute, too. So they all had an opportunity to not only enroll, but to see a movie. Recently, that was last week, I took an appointment to the Judge Ofield Drug Court as a part of the community advisory. We're pretty excited about that and what work we can do representing as a school board member and helping to make that court a better place.
I attended both East and AAA's graduations, and well, I attended a few of them. I spoke at those two. Had a great time. I won't take up too much time because I know we have a lot on the agenda, but I did want to point out and just give a shout out to our food service team. During the break between the last meeting and this one, I came across an article, a young woman from a school outside of Denver that was fired for giving away free lunches to children that didn't qualify for the National Free School Lunch Program. And so it just goes to show how far ahead we are here and the work that goes into our food service program, and the fact that every child at APS gets access to free breakfast and lunch, and we don't have to worry about that. So this young woman's hoping that she changes board policy, and I've never taken upon myself to backseat or Monday night quarterback another school board, but I hope they listen and I hope they take note of what districts like ours are doing around the country, so...
I had the responsibility of going to Kenmore and heard our superintendent admonish the graduates in a very outstanding way. And then I had to privilege of going to Schumacher for their dance class, their final dance class of the year, and the students did an excellent job. Excellent program, wonderful skills that they learned, the dances and the choreography, the teamwork, and they emphasize a lot about teamwork, how they work together. And usually during that age group, little boys and little girls don't want to be anywhere near each other. But they are very professional. They learn how to put left foot out and right foot back and put their arms in a certain posture, and they represent us well. We know that they have done well. Schumacher, Kraus, I know they have done very well in the contest, but Schumacher on that day did a wonderful job. It was a great program. Dancing classroom.
Okay, I was able to get an opportunity to dress the students at graduation at North High School, which is my alma mater, and Bookdo High School, and it was very nice. Of course, at North, the demographics has changed a lot, but they had a lot of bright students. A lot of those students were pretty much career and college ready, which was nice to see, and work-ready because they did announce all those kids where they were going. There were a number of kids who got scholarships as well to college, and they announced those. At Bookdo, Bookdo had a very good graduation. They had Stacy Hodo, who is, can you describe, the executive director of one of the Walmarts in Mexico, and she was the keynote speaker that evening. She's a graduate of Bookdo High School. She did an outstanding job of addressing the students, and the students there themselves are college and work-ready. There are a number of scholarships that were given. I mean, some kids up to $60,000 in scholarship money to attend school, so it was very great. And others were going some to the military as well, as those are going to the military from North. But it was really nice to see the kids ready to go into a field or into work and have something already set. So it was very, very, both of them were very good graduations, and I was pleased out. I get a kick out of being a graduate because you see the joy of all the kids, being able to walk across the stage, but also the parents who are happy to see their kids graduate, and especially all those parents who put a lot of time and work into working with their students. So it was very, very nice. Thank you.
I had the opportunity on the 27th to go to the community meeting at the Akron Zoo on the transportation talk, and part of the talk was about the walking school buses, or as we call them here in Akron, secret routes to school. There were some other topics as well, but I just wanted to thank Andy Davis, who is now with the University of Akron. He's still spearheading this for the community, but he was actively recruiting community members to be our bus drivers or chaperones to and from school, specifically around the Helen Arnold community, if you will. And he did speak a little bit about some of the things going on at Finley in that same vein, and talked a little bit about how the community got out and shovel sidewalks and things of that nature around Finley last winter as well. So it's still a discussion that's happening, and we are still actively recruiting adults to, if they have free time in the morning and/or the afternoon, to chaperone kids to and from school.
I did want to highlight, Mr. Barble mentioned about the lunch program, but we received in our information a long list of summer breakfast and lunch opportunities for all of our students who qualify. So we would hope that parents, guardians, grandparents would take advantage of that this summer, and I'm sure there will be a list published somewhere else.
On the website.
It's on the website, and it's a large list, so it should be able to meet a substantial need that's out there in our community.
Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else? All right. Now, time for some recognition. I like this recognition. Each year, the Akron Board of Education expresses its appreciation for those career educators retiring from active service. A marriage certificates are awarded to those educators who've completed a minimum of 30 years employment in their field, and at least 25 of them at Akron Public Schools. The certificates of appreciation are awarded to all other retirees regardless of the years of service, and honoring their contribution and development to youngsters in our school system. So each of the board members has a few of those, and is going to come forward and start with the steps. If you could come forward when she calls your name, if you're one of the... Stand up. We can get your picture.
Our first recipient is Juanita Field. I'll just start to read as Juanita comes. Juanita Field has retired from Akron Public Schools with 36 years of dedicated service. She is a proud Central High School graduate and enjoyed school with her many friends. Juanita began her career with Akron Public Schools in 1979. She was an assistant to the teacher in the orthopedic class at Barrett Elementary School. From Barrett, she moved to North High School, where again, she was an assistant to the teacher in the orthopedic classroom. She assisted at North High School from August through mid-December that year. Towards the end of December, Juanita Field decided to take her talents to Lincoln Elementary School as a new clerical assistant. She was at Lincoln until 2010, working with such principals as John Yelling, Ron Bishop, John Dawson, Tim Coffey, Jim Bale, Lyndon Green, and Cherry Gore. She is still recognized by many students, parents, and grandparents from those many years at Lincoln. When Lincoln's closing, Juanita was assigned to Kent Middle School as a clerical assistant. She worked at Kent with Principal Joanne Orlando and Anthony Lane. She often commented that she loved working at Kent. She worked with a great staff and often saw many students and parents from Lincoln. Juanita Field retired from Jennings Community Learning Center in January of this year. Juanita was a wonderful clerical assistant, but she was a great secretary. She worked side by side with the secretaries mentoring new secretaries and learning new techniques from new hires. You are Miss Juanita Field. Families still ask about you. When they ask me how you are doing, I often reply, "She is enjoying Myrtle Beach, volunteering at her granddaughter's school." Then I smile and say, "I will tell her you asked about her when I meet her for breakfast Saturday morning. Enjoy your retirement, Juanita Fields. We wish you much appreciation." Thank you. Photographer? No. Steven Lindgren. Have you ever had a moment when you needed a plumber who actually knew what he was doing? Do you ever seek the special person who had no fear attempting to resolve an unknown plumbing situation? Well, in the Akron Public Schools, we had a special plumber. His name was Steven Lindgren. Mr. Lindgren joined the Akron Public Schools as a teenager in 1976 to be a plumber's helper. Thirty-nine years later, he retired as a most respected plumber. One supervisor referred to him as one of the most professional maintenance persons he had ever known. Another said, "He was known as a person who would go to the extra mile or help pick up the slack." In 1997, his supervisor cited his strong work ethic. He was viewed as a leader within the department. There is no need to fear. Steven Lindgren is here. That could have been the rallying cry when plumbing problems occurred. Steven was often the one going into the old and new buildings fixing and solving numerous plumbing issues. And in many instances, he was the person asked to go into the building and troubleshoot the problem. In some of the old buildings, that might involve taking a journey into the older boiler room to try to locate a water valve that had not been used or seen for years. It might mean trying to tinker with the plumbing in order to attach a new plumbing part to an old plumbing system or an old part to a new system. In the plumbing department, Mr. Lindgren was also known as builder of contraptions. He built many ladders or contraptions that helped his fellow plumbers climb on top of some of the old boilers to make repairs. Now, Mr. Lindgren can enjoy his retirement with his wife Jean, who retired from Food Service Department at Akron Public Schools a few years ago. Congratulations, Steven Lindgren, and thank you for your dedicated service to the Akron Public Schools.
Next up, we have Dennis Gilmore. I'm hoping I'm not supposed to sing this first part, so I'm just...
Sing it.
The wheels on the bus go round and... Wait, I'm not finished. Up and down, round and round. Such was the workday for Dennis Gilmore. He was one of the most dedicated drivers who made sure that children were transported to and from school each day for nearly 37 years. It should be noted that Dennis was the driver for the orthopedic bus. One must have a special place in his heart to want to help and serve these children who are in need of special care, and must show love and compassion each day to these very special children. Simply stated, Dennis was that one who really cared. He knew each child individually, and it was said that he truly loved his children. Oftentimes, we forget that the child's attitude or tone for the day is set before the child enters the school or classroom. A bad start to the day for the child can make for a long day for the child, teacher, or both. That is why it is so important to have a person who can bridge the journey from home to school and back in such a caring manner. Mr. Gilmore was also a very artistic person as well. He was known for taking interesting and unique photographs and had a knack for making beautiful flower arrangements. So the next time you see a yellow school bus traveling down the road, there may be more to the ride than just watching the wheels on the bus go round and round, as they would say. There just might be a caring driver like Mr. Dennis Gilmore transporting children to an APS building in a most caring bus. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, for your service to the children of Akron Public Schools.
I have the honor of recognizing Mr. John Sarver. If you can come forward, please. Mr. John Sarver is an alumnus of the Akron Public Schools graduating from Ella High School in 1973. He returned to the Akron Public Schools in 1979, starting his teaching career in industrial arts at Goodyear. After 35 years of dedication and service, Mr. Sarver has announced his retirement. During his tenure with the Akron Public Schools, Mr. Sarver has taught at Goodyear, Kenmore, Jennings, the Juvenile Court, Bookdo, Alternative Academy, and finished out his career at Hire. Over the years, Mr. Sarver's principals have stated that his pupils are, quote, "busy and interested," unquote, and described him as, quote, "a dedicated educator who works well with the students and colleagues," unquote, and an outstanding science teacher and all-around great guy. Mr. Sarver has always made himself available to the students and their parents. As a testament to his outstanding teaching, he earned an overall rating of accomplishment in his most recent OTES evaluation. In addition to his teaching accomplishments, Mr. Sarver has been a football and baseball coach with the Akron Public Schools, both at Ella and at Kenmore, as well as intramurals at Hire. In recognition for his outstanding coaching and officiating contributions to the community, in 2014, Mr. Sarver was inducted in the Summa County Hall of Fame, Sports Hall of Fame, in their 58th Class of Inductees, actually along with our board vice president, Mr. Bruce Alexander. We wish Mr. John Sarver such much happiness in his retirement, and thank him for his many years of dedication and service to his students and athletes of the Akron Public Schools. Thank you.
I'd also state that my wife Jean is also retiring this year from teaching all these number of years at Ella High School also, as a children's... My mom saw me at all those schools that I worked at, she'd say, "John, you just can't hold a job." That shows you're well-rounded.
At this time, I'm happy to call the name of Paula Schaefer. In 1978, Paula Schaefer began her 37-year career with the Akron Public Schools as a long-term substitute French teacher at Betty Jane Elementary. The following year, Paula signed her first full-term, full-time contract and was assigned to Betty Jane and Harris Elementary Schools. For the next nine years, Paula was assigned to three through four elementary buildings a year as the sixth-grade teacher of French. Those buildings included Betty Jane, Harris, Glover, Windermere, Oshkis, Cyblin, Gill, Portage Pass, and Leggett. In 1988, Paula became the French teacher at Roger Kent, where she spent the next five years. During her teaching career, Paula was known as a highly competitive and terrific foreign language teacher who made her lessons interesting and educational for all students. Paula went on to become the Learning Specialist of Foreign Language and ESL, English as a Second Language, in 2004, having served as an interim in 2003. When she began the Learning Specialist position, the ESL program consisted of 300 students. Today, the program has significantly grown to 1,450 students. During her years as a Learning Specialist, she has worked closely with the International Institute. She has served on various committees, including the Foreign Language, Ohio Resource Center Advisory Committee, and the Foreign Language Model Curriculum Advisory Team. She has also served as the Secretary Treasurer of the Northeast Ohio Foreign Language Association. In addition to her work with the International Institute, Paula has also other local community connections with the Asian Services in Action, the Hispanic Community at St. Bernard's Church, as well as the University of Akron and Kent State University. Paula enjoys reading and travel. After having served our district for 37 years, we congratulate Paula, thank her for her years of service, dedication, and wish you the very best. She will be missed by all, and again, thank you for your service.
Good evening. I have the privilege to recognize Beverly Woolridge. Beverly Woolridge exemplifies a meaning of dedication, patience, and loyalty. She has been a faithful employee of Akron Public Schools over three decades. Her official retiring date was July 31st, 2014. Beverly Woolridge began her career as a stenographer I for the Program for Gifted and Talented in 1979. When she left the program in 1982, she left as a stenographer III. Ms. Woolridge then moved on to work with Mrs. Anne Gates, Assistant to the Superintendent for Community Relations and Legislative Affairs, from 1982 to 1991. For a short time in 1991, Ms. Woolridge worked in the Office of Business Affairs before joining the Communications Department from 1992 to 1998. She then moved on to work with Dr. Connie Hawthorne in the Department of Student Services and Security for two years. Beverly Woolridge was promoted to Administrative Secretary, where she had had the privilege of working with Dr. Sylvester Small, Donna Lewis, Dr. Susan Long, and Dr. Ella McWilliams, and you can imagine what stories she had to tell. She was efficient, dedicated, and loyal. She lived by the unspoken rule, whatever happens in the executive office stays in the executive office. Her character was never questioned, but always respected. In addition to her many duties as Administrative Secretary, Ms. Woolridge is an honorary chapter member of Alliance for Black Educators. She has been an active officer of the state employee's retirement system. She has not stopped. She has been elected to serve as a retiree board member for the state employee's retirement system. She will begin her term July 1st, 2015. We wish nothing but the best for Ms. Beverly Woolridge. We thank you for your service. We wish you the joy in your retirement that you have brought to so many, for so many years, and... years, at Akron Public Schools. Congratulations and thank you.
It's my great pleasure to welcome Joe Yost. Joe Yost has truly dedicated his last 39 years to the Akron Public Schools. Joe began his teaching career after graduating from Ellitt and the University of Akron as a physical education teacher at HIRE Junior High School after a measly three years there. He moved on to Ellitt High School, where he taught drivers and health for the next 36 years. He also fills in as the Assistant Principal on occasion. Joe has also coached football at Ellitt for 35 years. He's been a role model for hundreds of young men who played for him. Not only does he stress a positive team-oriented atmosphere on the field, but he also values developing them into productive citizens in the classroom. Under Coach Yost's guidance, Ellitt has a consistent winning tradition, which includes seven city series championships: 1989, 1991, 1992, 1995, 2006, 2012, and 2013, with an undefeated season. They also have made three state playoff appearances, including 1991, 2012, and 2013. You're kind of rubbing it in when you've got Vikings up here, because you don't have any football championships. Kind of like the Cleveland Browns. We would like to express our great thanks to Coach Yost for his dedication to the Akron Public Schools, both in the classroom and on the playing field. Although he will be missed teaching in his alma mater, he can still be found on the practice field, as he will remain the football coach of the Ellitt Orange Men. Thank you, Coach Yost.
Yeah, sure. First off, I'm thrilled to have John here. Spring of 1979, I had two coaches that were going to stay with Coach Skinner's assistants, and I heard John was back in Akron. I gave him a call, said, "Hey, John, what are you going to be doing in the fall?" He says, "Why?" I said, "Are you kidding? I need a quarterback coach." And John's been with me now for 36 straight years, and we'll start number 37 here in another month. I don't know a lot about football. But I know a lot about great people who made great educators and great coaches. And I've been thrilled that I've had a phenomenal staff. And actually, I started working for the Board of Education in 1971. I held furniture for Sam McNeil. I worked from John Forenzi, who was a business guy at that time. From there, I went down to grounds with Johnny Coe and Dean Frederick, and we've got holes put in playground equipment all over Akron. And then I got into teaching. I want you to know that I've never, ever had a bad day. I've always loved what I've done. Tremendously blessed. Thank you.
The superintendent is going to call an audible here, since we're on a football theme, and he has a brief announcement about the third-grade reading guarantee. For Ms. Kelly.
Yes, Ms. Kelly provided us a report on the status of our third-grade reading guarantee, and I'd just like her to just briefly read that where we are.
Okay, so first, I just want you to know that there was a change... There was a change in our cut score regarding the third-grade reading guarantee. Our students have an opportunity to take the reading OAA twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. Cut score used to be 392. It was increased this year to 394. They also have the opportunity to take an alternative assessment, which we call it the MAP. They have to score a 184 on the back. Last year was a 181. So at this time last year, going into our summer school program, we had 30 students who qualified to go into the summer program because they were at risk for retention. At this time this year, we have 58, and again, we do believe it is due to the increase in the cut score. Had we not had an increase in the cut score, we would have had 38 students who were at risk for retention headed to summer school. So our summer school program begins next Monday, June 15, and it will run through July 10. And at that time, our students will have two opportunities to take another reading assessment to move on to fourth grade.
Quick question. Will the cut score change next year?
No.
No, no. If my memory is correct, didn't the cut score change last year? It was higher, and then they lowered it? Did that change their numbers?
That was originally our MAP assessment adjusted, because originally, it was not aligned with the OAA cut score.
Gotcha.
So they did the adjustment so that the two were in alignment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. I neglected to say, as Mrs. Kelly reminded me, that those of you who are here for the recognition, if you wanted to speak out, especially if you had dinner plans, you may feel free to do so at this time or at any point. We do have... Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have a question. Last year, we had just done 30 students. We had some inquiry about reaching out to the parents. How responsive have the parents been in terms of getting them in the program this year? And did we do anything different in terms of reaching out to our parents?
Our principals did a phenomenal job of reaching out to the parents again this year, and all the three of our parents accepted the invitation, one refused. They said they were moving out of state, and they were not going to send their students to the camp. But the balance of the students are all registered and ready to begin. And we believe even the ones that did not accept, we believe they're going to come. They just didn't return the application. So we'll see how much...
So it's two we don't have returned that petition from?
Three. And one who refused because they said they're moving out of state.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We do have a few requests to address the board, two of which will be done in public session, and the other two will be done in executive session. So we're going to let the ones who can be done in public session go first. We're going to start with Ms. Autry. Pretty sure you're familiar, but you get three minutes. The board doesn't address you at this time, but the superintendent will get back to you with some information. Mr. Pemberton's going to keep the time. He's going to let me know when you have one more minute left. So I can hear you guys. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Diana Autry, PTA President at Bulto CLC. On behalf of John R. Bulto CLC PTA, we would like to thank Mrs. Sonya Gordon for her service. She and the late Dr. Deborah Houchens brought Bulto a long way during a vulnerable time in our history. Mrs. Gordon stepped up and took the helm under emergent and tragic circumstances in 2009. Under her leadership, she guided Bulto through implementing a new instructional model while simultaneously moving into a new building, adding seventh and eighth graders to the mix, and dealing with passionate PTA alumni and community members who also wanted the best for Bulto and to ensure that the best of Bulto moved on with the new Bulto. It was not an easy path, and we didn't always agree, but we understand and appreciate the sacrifices of her and her family in assuring Bulto's success. We are most thankful for her leading Bulto off of the Tier Two list and on the forward trajectory that we are now on. Five years as an Assistant Principal and the last six years as the Head Principal, she has been our longest-serving principal since my principal, Mr. Hoppe, who left in 1990. Her longevity is appreciated, and we wish her well in her future endeavors. I would be remiss if I did not also thank and acknowledge the other administrators, the dedicated staff, the PTA village and community, who are integral pieces and parts of the success. A special thanks to Norma James for accepting the one-year appointment as interim principal. This is yet another crucial transitional period for us. PTA remains staunchly committed. Six years ago, I addressed this board. I was the PTA president then, and I had a senior. And here I am today, still the PTA president, and I have an incoming eighth grader. Today, I would just like to state that we are reaffirming our commitment. I've seen a lot. A lot has changed for the better, but we all know that there's more work to be done. As a parent, I would like a stable, committed, and qualified staff that can help us grow and build our extracurricular activities and programs. As a PTA village and community, we want the same. We would like to reaffirm that we are partners and willing liaisons between the families and schools. We should be at the table moving forward, and this aligns with the APS vision and focus areas number two and three. We take our role as the village seriously, so we ask, please do not make decisions about us without us. Thank you.
Ms. Sheila Smith.
Sheila, I know you know these rules as well, so I knew that...
And I just cut this down to maybe about two and a half minutes. Good evening, everybody. It's been about seven years since I've been in this place, in the boardroom. But I'm coming as the Education Chair for the Bulto PTA. I guess you will call me the heavy. But I just like, I have a quote here, and I think it's pretty apropos to what we're facing in our community. And he said this, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." And that's what we're here to talk about today. I don't have to go through all the historical facts about Bulto and all the different reforms, but you know most of them have what they have been. We had magnet schools. We had small school initiatives. We've had high schools at work, May-Jimison Project, all of these projects through the years. But what our issues are is where are these programs and grants being sustained? How are they being sustained? And now we have New Tech. Most of the time, with all of these different reforms and grants we've had in the school, we have not had any articulation of the outcomes. Now, we're in the New Tech. New Tech, there are many questions we have about that, which I'll have a separate document that I will send all of you. I don't have enough time to talk about those. But I would like to make this public ask of this board. We know that Bulto has been a challenged school. We did move up from the tier, whatever that means. We still have no explanation for that. But we know that we are in a challenged district with APS, and we have a lot of charges coming in here because we have that designation. But since we, Bulto High School and the Bulto community, have gone through so many different programs, now New Tech, which we still don't understand and has not really been explained well to us, but we're asking this body, first, for school year 2015-16, while searching for a new principal, that we establish a task force comprised of PTA members and community leaders to review the New Tech model and review how effective it is for the Bulto CLC and also the Bulto school environment. Just like the CAH, when they want success, what do they do? LeBron came back, and he recruited. We're asking that we have the recruits of the best and the brightest and the strongest leadership for our building.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Okay. And the big X is this, that this board consider converting Bulto High School so it could have its own governing body, its own IRN, much like what was done for Akron Digital Academy many years ago. And we know, facts from the Ohio Department of Education, that a preliminary agreement or contract has to be in place by March 15 of 2016. And I'll leave with this quote, "Truth and passion is more than flinging a coin at a beggar." This is also Martin Luther King. "It comes to see that an edifice which produces beggars needs restructuring." Thank you.
Okay. Now I need a motion pursuant to Ohio Revisor 121.22G5 to consider a matter required to be confidential by federal law or regulations and state statutes.
So moved second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or... Got that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
All right. If I can ask Ms. Brooks to please stay, and we have to clear the room in order to do executive session. So I apologize to everyone who has to get up. Two minutes?
Yeah.
It'll take a minute to clear the room. And we, a next order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting for May 26. Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or concerns about hearing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Albertine.
Yes.
Mrs. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Abstained. All right. Superintendent, recommendations.
Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 51 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about personnel?
I just have a question about the year. Oh, no. Was it two? Item number two. Is that the correct date, 2014, 2015?
Yes. Because they're effective in June. And the new 2015 doesn't start until July 1st.
So it'll come back to us again for the latter part of this salary? So it says, the person's name, the salary, and then it says effective since 6/5/15.
That salary is prorated through the end of the year.
It's prorated? Is that on here?
No, that's realistic annual salary. And then between the hire date and the end of the year, salary is prorated based on the number of pays that are left to this year.
So the proration piece isn't missing. Right. So, okay, now we make... So the balance of their salary will be taken out of 2015, 2016?
No, like, for example, take their yearly salary and divide it by 12, and you come up with a monthly salary, and you come up with a high monthly salary amount. That's how it's calculated out between the time that someone's hired during the year to the end of the contract year. Because with teachers, they've got a 24-pay plan, they have 24 pays per year. So their last pay ends in August sometime to get them through the summer. So that amount is prorated out, so it's less than that. It's the percentage that would be left of that contract. And then after school starts, it'll be their next, their annual salary for the entire year.
I'm going to ask one more question. So it says effective start date 6/5/15. So what are they doing here? Are they at work now?
Yes.
So they're teachers?
Yes.
And so they'll be teaching what?
One is a special ed teacher, the other one is...
I should say, they'll be teaching who? Effective 6/5/15.
Is that confusing because she's reading it effective as a start date, you're reading it effective through, or effective to?
That's their effective date. That's most likely because that's their annual rate and there's probably some extended time for working during summer where they need to start working after school itself.
Like summer school or summer reading academy or any of those things would be starting.
Some would be starting today from that.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Madam President, I have before me for your consideration five motions and two resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
The move seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns about consent? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 12 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
The move seconded.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about business affairs?
Yes. Items three and four for recycling. Can I just ask quickly, for the contracts that we have for recycling, are we doing paper and food waste and et cetera, et cetera? Can you just tell me what we have contracts in place for?
It is all recycling. It is mixed recycling. It all goes into the same bin and they take it apart when it gets there.
And do we do food scrap, food waste recycling?
We do not because the food scrap, the food is part of the trash that goes in, so it becomes part of the normal trash. Food that can be recycled is not what you think is recycled because it's never out there to begin with. But as long as it's part of the actual trash with the trays and the other containers, it cannot be recycled by itself. You're thinking of composting. And no, we do not compost.
So I will not belabor it tonight because my battery's about to die and I know we have other things to...
Okay.
But I would like to come back to that at some point. I mean, we're a big institution and a big producer.
And we do not produce enough waste and the tonnage for people to allow us to do composting.
I'm pretty sure having...
That was the last time I looked at it. That was honest.
Just coming from having sat on reworks for three years. I mean, I bet there's something we could probably do with them and so I won't be a pain tonight. I mean, I would just like to know what our options are. It would be nice to see if we could, we're a big institution.
And we have looked at recycling everything we can. We recycle our, I'm sorry, our electronics. We recycle all our technology assets. We recycle all metals. We recycle all papers, cardboard, et cetera. Where food comes into the issue is metal cans go into metal. Food waste from a table is a combined waste. It cannot necessarily be taken out. And when you take it apart and put the plastic tray here, if it's recyclable along with the, you know, the fork and the spork and everything else, it does not allow us to take it easily out of that to do it in the amount that they waste, that they want to wait. And that was the last time I looked at it, was three years ago.
But if it could, then we would consider it?
I'll be honest with you, it would be something that you'd have to find somebody that would be willing to come and take it on a daily basis to get it. Because again, when you get into composting, you have to realize that you want to make sure it's composted correctly in a manner that produces good compost and it doesn't bring pest control issues for it.
Yeah, we're, there's a number of us doing composting around the city. One of our biggest challenges is that most of our compost stuff is going to Cleveland when there's real opportunities here. I'd like for us to consider too, and maybe I won't belabor the issue either, maybe just even a pilot program. We know, we pick up carpet grounds from bars, places to use in compost. There's a lot of analogy out here in the city, you know? Even if it becomes something we do as a part of our New Tech stuff, I mean, to just consider dividing that up and see what that looks like. And we have Hattie Larland, we have all kinds of folks doing major work in urban agriculture where the compost would be...
But as I said, the last time we looked at it, remember, it's taking it off of our sites in a proper area to contain it. And at this point, we have very limited ability to contain it until it can be disposed. So that was the last time I looked at it, the last time this went out. But we do recycle everything here at the site right now.
So...
I'm proud of the recycling that we do.
I know you are.
I really am. I just, that last piece wouldn't...
I would be glad to research that with Mrs. Kelly.
I know somewhere in the last four years, I may have talked to you about it, so I just want to be...
That's okay. It's not a problem.
I'm glad you've accepted the challenge, but if I can make it work through, we'll do it.
I will be glad to consider it.
Thank you, Ms. Deborah Hauchens.
Have a question.
Yes.
Item number one, are we also paying for AP tests at the other high schools? Not just the relisted?
Wherever there's AP test, but for this one, for those three buildings, I'm not sure what our costs are for other ones. It may just be a different contract.
Item 11, can someone just explain point of dispensing facility?
All right. Summit County Health reads when we need to dispense for a large amount of vaccinations. And I'll give you an example, a place for people to go to get that vaccination. If you remember, a number of years ago, it could have been a vaccination, say for SARS, it could have been a vaccination for one of those issues. As a shared service site, this allows them to select one of our locations and they have determined that East would be one of those locations. We've had an agreement in place for the last three years. It is time to renew it and that's what we are doing at this time is to renew East as a site should it be requested and the superintendent can make the building. There are others. At this time, this agreement is the only one that needs to be revisited at this point.
So the designation of East High School was determined by what?
It was determined by Summit County Health, their EMS coordination, in coordination with Red Cross and ourselves as well. It's what they can do to deal with this dispensing of large vaccinations or medication in an area in which they have determined they can use the public buildings that are available. So Summit County Health visiting new East CLC along with the other contributors that would assist us in doing that type of management for this issue.
You are so good, Deborah Hauchens. Why did they choose East, say, over any other?
Again, there are several other areas. This is the only agreement. There are other sites that they have selected. This is the only agreement that needed to be revisited at this time.
So what other sites?
I cannot tell you that it's not public information.
Several years ago, when we did H1N1, they use East, they also use Resnick and I think several other buildings. It's when they were giving out mass vaccinations. For a larger school like East, it's probably so they can get multiple people in with the larger areas like the gym because that's typically how they're set it up. If you want, we can have Rob Boxler get you the information from the health department on the positives and a new concept.
Oh, no, I like the positives. I just want to know, I wondered if there was a, did you look at demographics or whatever and determine that? That's my question. The second one was if there's another point of contact for this kind of work? Is there another CLC or other?
Yes, there are other locations.
That wasn't there, so that's all.
And as I said, it's this agreement only that needed to be revisited at this time. It only affected this building. Did you hear the yes and no? Yes, there are. Okay. It wasn't there. Thank you. Any other business concerns? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Madam President, I wanted to present a plaque that we received from United Way. We had a 19% increase in our United Way contribution, so they dropped off a plaque recognizing the school district. This morning, I had a surprise visit from about 20 staff members from Hatton School and who dropped off petitions to keep their principal. As you know, the board doesn't decide where principals are placed. That's my decision, but I wanted to provide you a copy of the petitions that were dropped off. I know you all have been getting a lot of emails as well.
That must have been what we're having.
Right. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. I just wanted to mention briefly, I had the honor of giving the graduation speech of Firestone High School. It was a fantastic crowd. The theme of my speech was just a kid from Akron in honor of the NBA Finals beginning on Thursday night and how they're just kids from Akron as well and that we look forward to great things from them, just as we do for Mr. James. And I wanted to mention, in addition to Mr. James being on national television last night, we also had on the Tony Awards, a Firestone High School graduate, Lisa Howard, who graduated, I believe in 1993, was simultaneously singing on the Tony Awards as LeBron James was competing in the NBA Finals. So even as we look back at those people who've come from Akron, I want to say young people, they're younger than me, I can call them young people, and their great success, it was, it's just an honor, graduation week, to not only be at the graduation that I'm at, but know that all of you are out there and that for each graduation, there are such high expectations and high rates of achievement in Akron Public Schools. So I just wanted to point out those two young people and wish the best of luck as we're going forward to this new class that we've just sent forward from 2015. So that is the extent of my address to you this evening.
Yeah, the other thing is always so great to either have the superintendent or the assistant superintendent or one of the administrators there. You know, I never see Ellen McWilliams, but I know she's there. She always texts up and, hey, you know, great job or whatever. I was like, where are you? And I'm feeling like they're watching me. I mean, she's like, haha, just at every graduation. I never see her. I know she's there because she says, like, that was kind of weirding me out at first, but it's always good to have, you know...
And if she's not there, Mr. Black is there.
Yeah.
Mrs. Alexander was there at Firestone as well. There's always several people. I don't think there are any of us that don't like a good graduation because, you know, or a good kindergarten recognition or a good eighth grade recognition because that's, you know, that's the good stuff.
I thought I had seen an open heaven. I was at Garfield the day from the Calisay Grange play. And all the kids were in gold and maroon, right? We're in the church. So I was like, oh, we're going. I was like, oh, it's just the Garfield graduates.
Mr. James and I were at AAA that night and we were advised to keep it brief.
You got that memo too.
Nice. Mr. Pennington?
No reports, please.
Any committee reports? All right. I don't believe we have any unfinished business or any new business. So again, because I love spending time with you all so much, pursuant to Ohio revised code section 121.22G1 this time, I ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of considering, what do you consider this time? Contracts, I believe. All right. The move seconded. Moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.